All right, we'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hammond City Council meeting on February the 3rd, 2015. We begin our meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright. We'll follow that by standing and pledging to the flag. Councilman Wright?
Yeah, would you join me in the prayer? Father, we thank you for always being here for us and allowing us to call upon you when our times of need. And Father, tonight we pause to show our appreciation for your guidance, both in the past and what you'll do for us in the future. We ask that you continue to be with us during this meeting. It's only through your strength and wisdom that we're able to endure and handle situations that otherwise we could not do on our own. Bless those who assemble themselves here tonight in Christ's name and pray. Amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America. (inaudible) for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ayer?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Here.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Ken Minnick?
Here.
Lonnie Rutt?
Here.
Including everybody's packets, a copy of the minutes from the January 13th regulations. Special business meetings are motioned to approve those. Motion by Councilman Best and second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Best.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for any corrections, amendments, or releases. Call the roll.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Lonnie Rutt?
Yes.
Also included in your packet is a copy of the minutes from the special call meeting on January 20th. Is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Councilman Ayer, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mead.
Does it?
Councilman Mead.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for corrections, amendments, or releases on those. Call the roll.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Lonnie Rutt?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the payment of salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Best, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Best.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for questions. Call the roll.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Lonnie Rutt?
Yes.
This time of year delegations from the audience, if anyone would like to address council, you may do so at this time. We just ask that you would stand and state your name and try to limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak. Mr. Reddoo?
Hey, how are you?
Good.
I know you guys got traffic riding down in front of our house. We get a lot of truck traffic down through there. Is there any way you could put up a sign to not operate your jake brakes? Unfortunately, whoever that guy was, he got that stop sign there at their corner. He has to listen to him jake brake after the stop sign. So, if there was something where to get him to do that, turn their jakes off?
We have that, actually, they do have that law that we passed in town. We'll work on getting signs for that.
(inaudible).
Yep. Still our delegations. Big enough to move on to old business. Councilman Wright?
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Layton?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Layton?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Best?
You had mentioned in the last meeting that we'd send a letter to the state and Kevin may have the (inaudible) bridge. But we heard the (inaudible) bridge, the Margaret Bridge.
No, I haven't.
At this point, I would confirm is that they have received the notification we sent indicating our desire to inform the project. So, they are planning to proceed with the project, but we have not got any specific details yet.
That's all. Councilman Mead?
Yes, sir. Question similar to his question on Morgan Street, and I was talking to Kevin about this before the meeting, is the traffic on Rome Street. Now that we've got that building tore down and have the fence up and stuff, I know we're going to leave Rome Street blocked, but can we not move it all over on the block it's affected, or we can open Carter Street back up? And the reason I'm asking to Ken is because it might need to be explained, because maybe people will watch it and actually see what happens or what's going on. Has something to do with the distance? They can't shorten it anymore because it has to be a certain distance?
You said Carter, you mean Crescent?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Crescent.
The reason we closed Crescent was when you actually go into that other lane of traffic, you're not looking, you're not up under the stop light. And so, we felt like the people wouldn't obey that traffic light going up and down Rome Street. They'd be looking straight ahead rather than maybe what was coming down the hill. So, it was safer that was the reason that we did that.
I was just wondering now if we could shorten it up, the merge line, actually, and have it open up and through the road. And in actuality, the state, when they come out to actually do the markings, their plan will be to take the merge line further because of requirements of the uniform manual traffic control devices. Their plan is in conjunction with that. Are you saying further back this way from the city office?
It'll have to stay closed, of course, until the two buildings come down. The county commission is looking at two resolutions right now. You all probably know, I know you know about this, but one of them is to try and approach the judge about turning the tax sale back to the previous owner, which would relieve them of any liability. Or also, if he doesn't do that, give approval to go ahead and spend the money to tear those buildings down. So, I think they're going to actually discuss that Monday night, is that right? Monday night.
That's all I have.
Councilman Holly?
No.
Dr. Curley?
Nope.
Mayor?
No, sir. Mayor, only thing I've got on behalf of the fire department, I guess everybody's saying that I've gotten with HPD and Detective Snyder. We've talked with the state of bombing arson. It's a good time, this fire's being ruled as an undetermined fire. There's nothing else that, I mean, after shitting through the rubble and stuff for over a week, there's nothing that we can find to call anything different. It's been on the news, it's been in the Rome County newspaper, but I wanted to let you all know about it tonight. The second thing I've got, during all this, we suffered a pretty heavy loss as far as some equipment. Right now, it's looking at we've got anywhere between $6,000 and $8,000 worth of holes that's been damaged. Got some pump issues on the trucks. Last two weeks, I've had some TML adjusters and stuff has been down, looking at it. So, there's not an exact figure out there yet, but that's bigger than a dollar loss for replacing that equipment at this time. It's looking between about $6,000 and $8,000. Had a guy from TML down today. I've got some pump issues. We can't seem to get them stopped leaking. Now, was it related to this fire? It did happen to act the fire. So, they're looking at that. Got some painting issues on the ladder truck where it's set over here and all the smoke and all the debris and stuff flying on it, just like the city complex building guy. Not saying the trucks are going to have to be repainted, but I wanted to make sure that we cover these things now. So, down the road, a couple of years or two, if something comes up, then we're covered. TML knew about it, we told them about it. It's not something we just pulled out of the sky to say, hey, you know, we got paint issues. The guys have worked, I mean, they worked their tails off day in and day out for over a week trying to clean these trucks. They done a knock-down job on it, but we still got some fading issues on some of the paint. The 2010 engine, all the, quite reflective, has got black specs in it. The guy noticed that today and he said, you're not going to get that out. He said, probably, he said, we're going to have to replace it. We're going to try some more different type of cleaning chemicals. I've got with Mr. Clean, since he does a lot of detailing around here, I mean, he told me just like Maria's car, I don't know whatever didn't come up next, he said it's going to be hard, but we've not, the guys actually did. I mean, looking at the ladder from initially, we've got pictures. I mean, looking at it today, I mean, it's a world of difference, but there's still some issues. So, I wanted you all to know about it.
Chief, we got insurance to cover those.
Yes, yeah. As far as replacing equipment and stuff, that has all the issue. Now, there'll be some, I didn't realize this, you know, I was talking to Angie today and Mr. Ham, it's kind of like, I mean, they'll figure it out and it'll do some depreciation value. The only problem I've got with that is, you know, how do you appreciate, you know, fire safety stuff, it's fire hoses and equipment and stuff like that, but we'll just have to deal with that issue, you know, when it comes up. But all of, so far, every single we can find, it's damaged. They've looked at it, they've taken pictures, and they're aware of it.
Thank you. City manager Kevin, do you have anything?
I have a few things. Wanted to make sure that you were aware that the city has received our $100,000 grant reimbursement for the (inaudible) grant that came in. This is about a week ago. So, we're up to date with those reimbursements. We have another one that will be going out soon for the grant, the work we're doing at the (inaudible) building. The city's attorney, Michael Kelly, who is handling the (inaudible) lawsuit, filed the city's response report last week in a timely manner. The response was required within 30 days of us receiving the original notification. We're currently working with an attorney who is representing the building owner for the Rome Street building that burned. We believe at this point in time that his attorney will be in town on Friday to meet with us, to look at the site and see what kind of a response we get from them at that point in time. The demolition for the structure that you approved a couple of months back, I believe it was on 50th Street, is that correct? Has been taken care of and that project was completed. As far as I know, according to Maria, that went off without any signs. Also, wanted to make you aware of the fact that Tuesday of next week, I will be attending some classes at T-Dot Headquarters in Nashville. It's classes and certifications that you have to have if we're doing projects under the local funding, such as the Margaret Bridge project. Someone with the city has to have these certifications presently, but myself and Maria have them, although they're only good for three years, so you have to periodically go back through the training. So, I'll be there on Tuesday. Depending on what time we get out of that, our mayor might have me back in time for a council meeting. I'll be heading back as soon as we get done. I just really won't know until I get home on the road. And then the last thing that I have, wanted to solicit your input on, our recycling container hasn't been ready for, I guess, a month or so now. I had actually called a few days before the fire to have it brought down, and thankfully the gentleman who handled that was out of the office the day that I called. And otherwise, a new, nice recycling container would have been right back here next to the building while it was burning. So, now that we've got that taken care of, we can bring it into the city. My concern is with these roads closed back here, whether that's still, at least in the short term, the best location to place it, or we should look at other options. Staff has talked about it, a couple of locations that we've discussed is either down close to public works facilities or adjacent to where the dumpster is located out by the police department. So, I just want to see what the council's thoughts were on the location for that.
You actually have two containers. You've got the one for the recycling, got the separate bins on it, and then you've got a box that's coming. Both of those will be brought at your, whenever you decide where to put them and when you want them.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Where would you, if it's out in South Hammond, exactly where would you put it?
There's a dumpster that's on the police department property, and there's a location, you know, there's a room there next to that dumpster, the recycling container could be put there. It's kind of, I guess, that building that sort of sits next to the police department building on that same property. It's kind of out beside it.
Next to the tennis court?
Yes.
That may be the best site, that maybe that would not be a deterrent to some of these people. If you get too far off the beaten path, they'll fill it up overnight, some of these.
Yeah, that may be the best thing, too. Maybe.
We can try.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's affordable. You can transfer it in with you, don't want you to have a problem with it with the box.
Anything else, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Committee reports. No committee reports, move on to the agenda item. If you don't mind, I'd like to move the last agenda item up to the first agenda item, discussing possibly approving interlocal cooperation agreement with the Rome County Highway Department. We've already thanked them once, but we haven't formally thanked them, but Dennis and his workers came over, of course, the night of the fire, and provided us with a lot of fuel and a lot of salt and a lot of manpower. Once again, before we get started on this, Dennis, we appreciate everything you did that night. Included in your packet is a copy of the interlocal agreement. Dennis, do you want to speak on that and briefly tell everybody what that's about?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. This is an agreement that we'd like to have with the city of Hammond, city of Rockwood, Dunne, Dunny Thayer, city of Kingston, probably going to Auburn Springs, to all the cities. And this just helps to where that if the street department Hammond needs to borrow a migrator, if they need a dump truck, if they need 10 ton of rock, if they need something that we can do, if they need us to help them put a tile in, we can do it without me getting in trouble, without you all getting in trouble. They can help us. We can loan them equipment. If there's a cost factor, if they need rock or coal mix, likely we sell them asphalt or something, that would be the cause. But usually, we just let them, you know, use the equipment, they take care of it. Somebody asked at Rockwood, well, what if it tears up? Well, you know, if I send my high lift over here, which is here now, and they're using it, and I know that something's wrong with it, and it comes, it's tore up, that's something that myself and the mayor work out, to who pays and how much it would be. If it comes over here and it leaves a shop, a dump truck, and has a flat tire, I would expect, and I think that they would fix it, that wouldn't be a whole big problem. But if I knew intentionally that something was wrong with it and they come out and it tore up, that's something we'd work out, that we wouldn't want to hold you full fault of, or vice versa. If we come up here and borrow one of your lawn doors and something was wrong with it, they knew it, and then it tore up, would we, should we be fully responsible? That should be something we've worked out, and we could work out. This is just a good agreement that we can do. We was glad Mr. Mayor to come over and help the citizens of Hammond the other day when this tragedy happened. We was glad we had the resources to help. That's the reason we'd like this agreement to where we can help the city of Hammond, the city of Kingston, the city of Rockwood, the city of Auburn Springs. If they need our service, or if we need their service, you never know, and they might call us, say, hey, you guys are out patching, could you stop by and get this hole for us because you've got the next? We'd be glad to do that. I won't entertain any questions.
Has anybody entered into this agreement yet?
The city of Rockwood passed theirs last Monday night. Yes.
Dennis, how long is this for, starting now a year or something?
Well, I don't believe there's a, I don't believe there's a time limit on it. There is a cancellation, I believe, on it of 60 days. It says if you want to bow out of it. I'd hope that it could be a working relationship, that we could be hands in hand and work in the future, that it would help both of us if we needed each other. I know he was a big help when we were moving all that stuff around at Renaissance Park. You know, they don't just do bulldozers, we'd have to interview with you. That's good, that's more than I just wanted.
We need a motion to discuss it.
We need a motion to approve it.
Go on, move.
Motion by Councilman Wright to approve the interlocal agreement in front of you with, between us and the county, is there a second? Second by Councilman Layton, Councilman Wright?
No, I agree with what's been said. You know, there's other times that we've received help, and it's just like the agreements we've made with Kingston as far as the fire department. There are just some ways, I think, to be beneficial to both parties.
Councilman Layton?
I like the idea of there being something formal and written down so that, you know, we can have that to refer back to, and if there's a policy in place, I suppose, going forward. So, thank you for your effort on that.
Floor is open. I too like it, and I hope everybody else comes on board, and I hope we can work together well in the future. Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Ken Minnick?
Yes.
Lonnie Rutt?
Yes.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate it very much.
Next item, discuss and possibly take action regarding the city attorney request for qualifications. I will turn it over to Angie or Kevin, either one. Kevin?
You should have received two documents related to this particular item. One is the original request that we've put out soliciting responses from individuals interested and qualified to serve as the city attorney. And then the second thing that you would have would be the response that we received from one individual who put together a very nice package of information for our review. So, I'm just sort of trying to take questions if you have specific questions regarding the item.
Allison is, of course, here, she's with us. If anybody has any questions for her, I do know her from the work that I do during the day. I work with her, and she approached me two, three months ago about this. So, I don't have anything bad at all to say about Allison.
Where is she?
Right here.
Allison Rinn?
The one, you know, the one thing that we probably need to clarify is that this is filling a slot for an elected seat. How we fill it is up to us at this time. If we want to appoint her to Harold's seat, then that appointment will stay until the next election, and then it will have to go on the ballot. Or we can appoint her, I think we can hire her on a case-by-case basis.
I thought the new charter called for appointment by the council.
It does, but this seat won't be affected until 2016. So, tell Harold's position, as if Harold was still sitting here with us. Same with Dr. Curley.
But he wouldn't go on the ballot.
It should.
2016. He shouldn't go on the ballot.
It should go on the ballot for a replacement at the next election, is the way I understand it.
That's what I thought.
You think we're going to appoint him till 2016?
There's three positions. There won't be another election before.
The county election in the summer. I wish we had an attorney to refer to.
Well, I'm glad to see that we do have, I've been told many times, we don't have attorneys in Hammond. I'm glad to see that we do have one, so we could possibly, she could run for it.
If, yep, Queen Street.
If you make appointment, then whatever salary is in effect, that's sort of the way it is versus putting someone on.
Contract in place based on what we think about ours middle, just have her in the contract for it.
Yeah, we need to go back and look at the replacement of a vacant elected official. I'm pretty sure it says that we have to do it at the next election. I could be wrong. We need to check.
But you refer back to the old charter right now, though, on this position?
We could hire her on retainer, right? And that would, that would.
Is there a motion to go ahead and accept the proposal by Ms. Rinn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Layton, and a second by Councilman Best. Councilman Layton?
I'm just thankful that you're interested in the position. We need to fill it, and you have great credentials, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Councilman Best?
Basically, same as Councilman Layton, say, I'm just excited. We got somebody we can call when we got a problem.
Thank you for the city of Hammond and Hammond.
Floor is open for question or discussion.
Would she be coming to our meeting?
I believe in the proposal that was part of what was requested, and so I said, you know, that's certainly requested or required in a position, I would be willing to come. I just live three blocks up the street personally. During the day, I'm usually in Kingston, at the courthouse, or at my office in Rockwood. But otherwise, you know, it's a negotiable instrument is what it seemed like for whatever your decision is and however the charter reads, it has to be interpreted at this time. It's certainly, you know, open for discussion. Want to go up next?
The salary will be set according to what the old charter had, which referred to ordinance, I think, that was set up for his, for the salary, or no, the ordinance would be our budget.
Well, his salary was voted prior to the, prior to his election. Any elected official, if you change the salary, has to be done prior to the election. But if you done it on a retainer basis, that salary has nothing to do with it.
Correct. If we go by what we just said, if we're going to appoint her, we go by Section 11 where she's got spelled out what the fees are and what she's owed for the fees. Because if you go by Harold's, it was still $5,400 a year, or $50 a month or something, which is, we all knows off, and hers is $800 a month. So, I would say we can go as high as we want. If we need to change the ordinance before.
If you made appointment, you'd have a problem with it, right?
You can't change that seat right now, is what I'm saying. Until 2016, you can't change the salary of our, of us, or of any elected official until that term, that seat is up.
But if we put her on retainer, if we don't appoint her, if we hire retainer, then we can.
So, is that what we're doing? Is that what the motion is to hire on retainer?
If everybody's okay with it, I mean, I would think, I mean, I would feel more comfortable to let Kevin and Allison get together and come up with something for us next week so that we know what's going on. It's going to be an hourly, or it's going to be, we need to get a clarification.
Well, you, I mean, you can pay attorneys so much money per month to be on retainer, and then with agreements that the work they do, so much an hour, so and so forth.
You're basically filling an interim position that would be filled permanently once the election point is reached by an appointment according to the charter.
Which election, I don't know, but you would have to go by his salary, I'm pretty sure.
The election.
2016.
That's when the new charter takes take.
Fill the, fill the vacant seat, though, I think, as it's going in 2015. We'll have to look at.
At that point, I think you would go into an appointed attorney.
Yeah, exactly. But in the meantime, we can do it on retainer.
Yeah.
I guess that's something, Kevin, you'll have it.
Is everybody okay with, the motion is to go ahead and hire, or go ahead and go with Allison, is it okay with letting them come back next week with a more precise clarification?
I have a couple of concerns.
I don't know you personally. You are a very young attorney. You graduated in 2013 and I do know that attorneys generally have a large ego. So, would you have a problem in dealing with situations with the city of going to TML or whoever that we decide and consult with them about the case that you're involved with?
Are you talking about the, the collective interest I referenced or just any case talking?
Any case that you felt like you, your experience and your background did not qualify you to, to handle. That, that situation.
Okay. I would certainly have no issues going to other people for consulting or advice or, you know, guidance. I do it quite frequently as a young attorney and even just other members of the bar that have been doing it longer, it's part of the professionalism is going to other people and saying, hey, have you seen this situation before? What have you done? Do you know what to do? What should I do kind of thing? So, I have no problem to do it. My boss calls it leaning into the awkwardness sometimes. You just gotta, you do it. If I don't know, then I'll find someone who can help guide me certainly.
Well, part of being intelligent is knowing where to find the answers, not necessarily knowing the answers. And by the way, when I said, I didn't mean to indicate that I thought you were too young for the job. Anybody in this audience is young to me.
This is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, questions?
Let's hear the motion.
Motion is to go ahead and, and go with, with Allison. There may be, there may not be any, you know, next week we can get clarification because there may be only one way that we can hire.
But, I mean, is that understood in the motion that, that Kevin and?
Allison.
Yeah, well.
So, hire and she goes next week if she got fired.
She may quit, you know.
I mean, long as we understand that, yeah.
Yeah, I think the determination still has to be made as to, as the mayor was saying, you know, what the term's going to be and how the appointment works and that kind of thing. But as far as her qualification and suitability for the position, I think.
That could be your first test is to check with TML and see which way we should go in that situation.
Okay. Any more questions? Call her up, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Bass? Buddy Holling?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Monnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Hart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is discussing, and first ring of ordinance 0215-01, an ordinance of the city of Harriman, Tennessee to amend policies relating to the disposal of property determined to be surplus to city needs.
You skipping TM.
No. I wonder what that, it didn't look right. I just kept looking back. No. Next item on the, I'm sorry. Next item to discuss and possibly take action or discuss with the, our system, the employees. Okay. The resolution number and the ordinance number is the same. Kevin, can you elaborate, please?
Just taking those and passing them around, please. So, as I know you're all aware, the retirement costs have increased substantially for the city. One of the first things that Dr. Curley brought to my attention after I came to work with the city was that was one of our biggest challenges going forward. So, we've been working on some possible solutions. The state, TCRS system now has five years of plans that are available for, for subentities to enter into. So, we've taken a look at those and are making a recommendation as to how we think the city should move forward. I do want to point out, as the title slide to this PowerPoint suggests, that this is for new hires only. Present employees of the city would not be affected by any decisions that would be made with regard to transitioning the retirement program. There may eventually be an opportunity for those employees to voluntarily transition if they feel like the new retirement system better benefits them. However, that's actually dependent upon an IRS decision that TCRS has requested and is awaiting, but has no real timetable as to when an answer would come. All right. So, just historically with regard to retirement plans, there's, there's two different types. There's a defined benefit where contributions are made as a percent of the employee's payroll. Upon retirement, the employee earns a set amount generally calculated based upon some criteria, which is their salary and their years of service. Employer contributions change periodically based upon whatever actuarial study determines is needed to fund the future benefits of the plan. And these are generally the more costly retirement plans for the employer. The other type of plan is a defined contribution where again, the contributions are made as a percentage of the employee's payroll. However, the employer sets the contribution level, level based upon their own criteria. Could be budget, could be market competition to attract employees. Contributions can be raised or lowered as those factors change. And eventually, when someone retires, the market conditions and the investments that they have made determines the amount of money that's available for them at retirement. So, what the state has done is they have created a new plan that they refer to, there's actually two plans that they refer to as hybrid plans. And those plans combine both, a defined benefit component with a defined contribution component, both of which are funded at a lower level than their standalone counterparts would be so that the overall cost is lower than what historically a defined benefit plan would be. It's, it's an interesting concept in that as you make investments, as you know, you generally don't put all of your investment in a single company or a single industry or sometimes even within one country's, the companies that are located in an individual country. The hybrid plan is similar in that you get the pros and cons of the defined benefit plan and the defined contribution plan to give you more diversity upon retirement and how your retirement funds will be made available to you. This is actually one of the two hybrid plans is the new plan that all new hires for the state go under, I think, beginning as of sometime during the last six months. I forget the exact implementation date. And also with the hybrid plan, the state of Tennessee makes their defined contribution plans available to us. You can choose a third party to administer the plans if we want to. But the state of Tennessee plan is an existing 401K plan, which actually reduces our payroll liabilities by utilizing yet IRS regulations prohibit governmental entities from establishing new 401K plans. If we established a new plan, it would have to be a 457. So, as a result, we can actually save more money by participating in the state's plan. So, here's a look at historical costs. The first bar that you see on that graph is if someone goes into a Plan One, defined benefit retirement plan and what their contribution rate is at the implementation of that plan. So, this would have been where the city of Harriman was whenever they first went into the TCRS system. And you contribute roughly six and a half percent of payroll as, as an employer. Plan Two, again, a defined benefit plan, but the way the calculations are based to determine what the retirement benefit is, provides a lesser benefit to employees, but it's very similar to Plan One. And someone going on that plan as a new participant would contribute about 3.4% of payroll as an employer to the retirement plan. Plan Three is the first of two hybrid plans where the combined contribution for the employer is 8.9% of payroll. And Plan Four is a pure defined contribution plan. In other words, it's like 401K or 457. And I've demonstrated that at 7% of payroll. That, that number could really be changed to anything that we, we might want to set it at. And then Plan Five is the newest of the plans. This is the plan that state employees go under and for it, it's a hybrid plan. Employer contribution is 9%. As a comparison, the next to the last bar that you see on that graph is where the city of Harriman's Plan One, defined benefit contribution was in 2007, just prior to the transition of the hospital. And that was at 8.2%. So, from whenever the city of Harriman first went on TCRS until 2007, the cost had increased from 6.5% to 8.27%. A bit of an increase, but certainly manageable. However, our rate today that began around 2008, 2009, I believe, is 32% and is represented by that, that last large number there on the graph. And so, as you can see, both of the hybrid plans that are available to us would put our retirement contribution for new employees back to about where the 2007 level was, either at 8.1%, which is just under, or at 9%, which is just over. And you'll note that during that period of time, the increase was approximately 27%. I want to remember that number because it'll factor into the recommendation here in a minute, but in other words, our cost had increased 27% prior to the hospital transition. So, here's a comparison of the two hybrid plans. Plan Three, the employer, the city would contribute 1.1% of payroll for the defined benefit component. The employee would contribute 5% just as they do today under our present retirement plan. And then the city would also contribute 7% to a 401K plan if we use the state plan, 457 plan, if we start up a new one of our own. Over time, the defined benefit rate would adjust up or down on an annual basis based upon the, what we actually need to fund for the benefits, just, just as we've been doing previously. But because the benefits are calculated at a much lower level, those costs will not vary as much as they have in the past. Also, we will not anticipate another impact on the retirement system the way the hospital transition did. And the defined contribution that I mentioned, we were projecting a 7% contribution to, the city can decrease that over time if it needs to to offset increases in the defined benefit rate. 5% is the minimum that TCRS recommends that be contributed to the DC component of the plan. So, we've got 2% there that we can adjust down and still be meeting the minimum contribution without putting any extra burden on the employee either. The hybrid plan, Plan Five, the state utilizes, is, is very similar, 4% into the DB as opposed to 1.1%. 5% for the employer into the defined contribution for a total of 9%. It's a slightly higher contribution rate in the beginning, but essentially what you're doing is trading a higher rate at the start for stability in that that 9% never changes. This plan, if additional funds are needed to fund benefits at that level, it actually goes in and starts decreasing benefits. Or eventually, one of the mechanisms that it utilizes to balance, balance out the revenues and expenditures would be to increase the employee's contribution from 5% to 6%. So, it will go up 1%. It, it is concerning in that it can create, particularly for small groups, changes in the benefit calculations even on an annual basis. And I would think too, it would be somewhat unsettling for the employees because with each of those annual changes, their projected benefits of retirement will change as well. They also stand to, to see an increase in their contribution rate from 5% to 6%. So, with that in mind, what, what we're recommending is utilizing the Plan Three hybrid plan, which would reduce our rate from 32% for new employees to 8.1% today. And here's where I want to go back to that 27% increase. The DB part of that 8.1% is 1.1%. So, if you take our actual experience from the beginning of TCRS, the city of Harriman to 2007, our cost increased 27%. If our cost increased 27% against that 1.1%, that would equate to about four tenths of a percent. Meaning, if you discount the transition of the hospital and you look at our history of costs in the retirement plan, it would indicate that at most, we would see a less than half a percent increase in the DB over time. That's something that we might have just absorbed into the budget, but worst case scenario, we still have the option to decrease the defined contribution component from 7% to six and a half or 6% to offset that increase. Another reason why we ruled out Plan Five is if all the city employees were transitioning over and we were going to have 60-plus participants, even though it's smaller than 100, it's still a fairly large group and it might be worth trying. But since what this is actually doing is adding new employees to it, it's going to be a very slow build of number of participants within. So, in those early years, when you've got three or five participants, the numbers can just swing all over the board every time that they do a new actuarial study. And we also recommend that we use the TCRS as a DC component for the city contributions into their 401K plan for the employees. We would probably also establish a 457 with the state of Tennessee that if the employee wanted to contribute their own funds additionally voluntarily into that plan, they could do so. So, we would have in effect both 401K and the 457. Finally, just two things to note. First, we have to pass two resolutions to start this transition. One notifies the state of our intent to begin our, our current group retirement plan to transition into Plan Three. The second resolution actually indicates our desire to implement the defined contribution plan with the state for that part of the retirement. Also, there is a minimum six-month notification to the state for terminating the current plan. And then the change will begin at the first quarter of the year that follows that six-month window. So, in our case, right now, October 1st would be the earliest that we can get the new plan in place. And that would be irregardless of whether we pass the resolutions this month or next month. But as long as we pass them before the end of March, we should be able to do the October 1st implementation. So, with that, I'll take questions.
First question, Andrew. The employee contribution that we are now under, which is, you said 30%?
32.
32%. Are we locked in to that 32% with those present employees? So, we will continue to have to play that.
It will be reevaluated at least every two years and the rate could go up or down, but we are. but we are locked into that.
Now, from what you said, there'll be no change or no effect on present employees if we...
Unless the IRS says that legally they have the option, and then it would be voluntary only.
It'd be their choice. And we're sure of this. And also, you recommend Plan Three, and if we chose to go that way, you'd want to make sure that's what you want because I don't think you probably want to switch. Would you or could you switch down the road a year or two if you...
You're talking about the city switching? You could switch again if we create a third group. But, you know, other than going to a pure defined contribution plan, I'm not sure that the city really has many other options. Because of the small size, the transition of the group, which they don't recommend for Plan Five. Plan One is what we have today, so, you know, that's the only other option. Or that's one option would be to come back into this plan, but we know what the costs there are. Plan Two is a sort of a mirror of Plan One, and the cost there would be even higher than what this rate is.
And I understand that when we merged into the hospital plan, that's what really drove...
It is. Essentially, think of it this way. There's always the potential in the retirement plan when there's a DB component, having an unfunded future benefit or underfunded. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. It's just market conditions at a period of time when an actuarial study is done. It doesn't mean that you're not paying what the state said at one point in time you're paying because the city has always paid whatever the state said we were supposed to pay. But because of the market decline, when the actuarial study was done for us and for just by any other entity in TCRS, there was an unfunded component because all of our investments declined. Okay? Initially, that unfunded component of however many dollars was spread out over all the hospital employees plus all the city employees to catch up over time. So, you know, that was probably 120 to 150 employees. When the hospital employees were pulled out of contributing and put into a different retirement plan, they were still going to get future benefits. So those underfunded dollars had to be put into the plan so that they'd be there when those people retired. But now, instead of spreading that over 120 to 150 employees, you're spreading it over 60 to 70 employees. So think about putting $100 in, there's 60 people having to come up with $100 instead of 150 people having to come up with $100.
Is there a motion to go ahead and pass the resolutions R-0215-01 and R-0215-02?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler. Is there a second? Second by Councilman May. Councilman Ayler?
Basically, Plan Three is a combination of a pension plan and what we know is more working. So, you know, what we're looking at here is what private employees and private companies are offered to them in retirement packages, that kind of thing. And if I look here, it looks like even the matching is virtually identical to that. So it's extremely similar to if anyone has had a 401K plan. The hybrid component, of course, is the part that is the defined contribution, which is just like a pension. So it's they're participating in a guaranteed benefit, defined benefit, and then they're participating in something that has variability to it, which, in my experience, oftentimes outpaces the growth of a defined benefit plan. It is actually more beneficial to the person participating. So as far as the cost is concerned, this to me, I mean, I think we can all see from the chart that you put up there, that that cost increases the definition of unsustainable going forward. And we know what the cost has been, the bill we've been hit with to pay the TCRS this year. And if we had two or three years of that, that's a big problem. So for me, you know, Plan Three is a clear choice, especially regarding the costs associated with it. And I think that employees will more than likely, if it is available to them voluntarily, switch to this plan if the, as you said, the IRS will allow that. I hope they do allow that.
I think it could, as you say, be beneficial, particularly for those who are just getting into retirement plan. And if you're within five years of retirement, it's probably not going to be beneficial to you to make the transition. But for those who've got a number of years left to build in the plan, it could very well be beneficial.
Councilman May? The floor's open for question or discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Where did these originate?
The resolutions? They're from the state. Other than just the...
So they've been screened legally and all that?
Any entity that, as the NTCRS has passed a version of that resolution, they may change over time, such as as they've added new plans, there's new options that you can choose from. But it's drafted by the state's legal.
I guess I'm remembering back what happened to us with the hospital.
Let's see, we got to do this on two reasons or just one? My only problem with it is we just sent it tonight. It's just hard to get all those numbers in my head, so you're listening. And just like you said, the hospital deal, it was, we're paying a little bit on some stuff. I just, I'd like to have a look at it for a week to just...
There's a motion in a second. It can very well, it can fail and we can put it back on if we, you know, we can do it again next Tuesday. No real hurt. I have a couple of questions. Can the hospital employees that transitioned over, can they, they can't switch over to this, can they? If they're currently with, they can't switch what they're liable to have, what they left here, they can't switch.
Not unless IRS changes their ruling.
But even then, they're no longer a participant in the plan, so there would be no...
Also, can you, do you know a dollar figure? I know, I know, I just want you to say it. From 2007 to now, the difference that we pay every year because of the hospital transition?
I...
It's about $150,000 to $700,000. And we're...
He's here.
It's about $150,000 is what we work and do in a year, and it has swollen to, I think, almost $700,000 per year.
Mayor, could we table the motion rather than defeat it?
Sure. I mean, it's Councilman Ayler and Councilman Mayner are the two that made the motion. They can withdraw it or we can move on.
I've got a question for you. The contribution rate for the current employees, is it going to be with the new hires that are going to the new plan? Is it going to be the same rate?
For the employee, yes.
Okay. If the IRS so decides that, yes, they can't switch over, will current employees switching to the new plan even further worsen the one that's 32% now? When you have 60 splitting it up, you're going to have, say, half of them go, you're going to have 30 people covering the money then. So your percentage rate would look higher?
It will have an impact, but it will also, over time, keep the cost down because the defined benefit component that they're trading it for is at a lower level when they run the calculations. So, yes, it could have a short-term increase, but it would have a long-term decrease.
So say like the $700,000 went up to now, that might actually lower because you moved people off that plan over to the new plan? Am I seeing that?
What it would do, when you're funding those, underfunding to catch back up, those dollars would remain there because those are for benefits already earned. But they would, under the new plan, the benefit would be at a lesser rate.
Well, I get, okay, if that $700,000 is, it's still going to be there.
Yes, yes.
Okay, then that's where it comes into play if you had 30 people, you have 30 people paying the $700,000, so that's where, that's where your percentage would increase.
Right.
About, okay.
The per-employee rate would increase, but when they switch over, there are new benefits going forward, you're going to pay them at 8.1%. So in the end, it's, for the most part, it's going to balance out. For the city, when you're looking at the bottom line, total percentage for all employees, it's just one group of employees, 30% may actually go up, but you're trading it for 8% of those who switch over.
Because if there's no switch over, I mean, with our turnover not being very much, you're talking, like you were saying before, just a few people. You might go five years and only have 10 people.
Right. It's certainly, it's a long-term benefit, but at some point, and I'm not saying you have to do it tonight, that's not why I'm concerned, is because like I said, the implementation date doesn't matter if it gets done by March. But at some point, even though this may not really benefit the city for 10, 15, 20 years down the road, at some point, we've got to make that decision or it's just going to keep getting worse.
And I appreciate what you've done on that. I mean, we've been looking for a solution. I'd like to look at it for a little bit, just look at the numbers to see what we're doing.
It's a big decision.
Well, my thought was, McKenna, stop it, is, okay, in some parts, we do that, we determine what we're going to do down there. You know, we keep swapping with those small amounts, have to pay more to keep it at $700,000
And there were some other things that made our fairly alert, you know, and also trying to help, but some of that requires information from the state and their approval. And we're just not to the point yet to bring that before the board, but there are some other things that we're probably seeing in the near future to try and help this as well.
Any more questions?
Are we going to vote on it or what are we going to do?
Oh, it doesn't, you know, if the, if the, if Councilman Ayler and Councilman Mayner want to withdraw, we can withdraw.
Pardon me, Mayor. I'll withdraw my motion, but I think we need to reach a decision on this at the next, at the next council meeting.
Councilman Mayner, he's going to withdraw. Are you okay with that?
Well, my second thought, good. If you withdraw this, then yes.
Let's put it on the next week's agenda. If you have questions in between now and next Tuesday, go by and see Kevin. And also, we'll make sure we invite any firemen or any policemen or any street workers that, recreation workers that want to come up and may have questions, they can, although they probably won't be affected unless they want to voluntarily later. But if you have questions, go check with Kevin and we'll bring these two resolutions up next week. Nice work though, Kevin. Next item on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 0215-01 and ordinance of the City of Harriman, Tennessee to amend policies related to the disposal of property determined to be surplus to city needs. It's also included in your packet. This essentially is taking out Title V, Chapter 6, and replacing it with items 5-601A through
What does it do? It'll no longer require an auction to dispose of surplus property.
The, just to give you a brief description of this, I think this process began when the charter was updated last year, but it was both a charter and an ordinance that needed to be addressed, so this is the ordinance component of that. As the section is currently written today to dispose of property, we can either take civil bids or we can hold a public auction. And that public auction basically has to be an in-person auction, has to be held like during certain hours of the day. It's pretty restrictive as how you can do it. The city's actually not been following the ordinance for quite some time now because we've been selling a lot of the surplus on gov deals for probably a year and a half, two years. That's how most cities get rid of their surplus now. This is basically just, I guess you'd say, modernizing the auction statute within our own code to reflect...
Basically authorizing what we've been doing.
Yes, sir. The only thing that's a little bit of a new component would be, you'll see in 5601A, there's a blank there that the board can insert value if you'd like, or you can set it at zero if you want. But it would basically just set a dollar figure where the staff can submit to me and I can approve getting rid of equipment up to a certain dollar value. And then anything above that, we need to come to the council. So if we're getting rid of chairs, typewriters, you know, things that are going to bring $5, $10 apiece, if we're lucky, we wouldn't have to bring all that before the board each and every time we get rid of that type of stuff. And if you don't want to set it up that way, we can strike that clause right together.
Meaning that we'd still have to group everything together like the golf course just did where they put the telephone poles in the building and had to bring all that as a package. By doing this, say if we put in excess of $500 on it, all that stuff we got, less than $500, you would have been able to authorize and go ahead and put it on auction any time versus waiting.
Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
We'll get it on discussion. Motion by Councilman May, and second by Councilman Holly. Councilman May?
You said something about setting a limit. In other words, we could dispose of property up to a dollar amount, say $500 or $1,000.
That limit would be for me to authorize disposing the equipment without having to bring it before council. And you could always still, I mean, even if it was under the landmaker, if there was something that I was holding on to that you felt like we needed to get rid of, you could still hear that item, it just wouldn't, we wouldn't have to bring it before the board.
Who is purchasing money without a county or a council? Do you have a person? Any of you?
I think it's 2,000.
Without me, I would define that number to double interest, and spend $2,000 by estimates. $2,000 is settled by estimates.
I don't know. That'd get in, that'd get in vehicles. Well, but if he does, then we won't worry about him.
He can get up into $2,000, $3,000. Say, he put it on there, it went for $600, he's in trouble.
No. I mean, if you're an estimate of that, hopefully puts it on there, $500 and goes for $25.
And a case like that, for our listening, probably pull like a...
In a case like that, prior to listing it, we'd probably pull like a Kelly Blue Book value on a vehicle if it's under a limit you set, and we'd list it, but it would typically definitely be coming for the Council anyway.
What dollar limit do you have?
It suggested 500 to 1,000, but is that covers stuff like you mentioned, chairs, et cetera, et cetera, which sounds reasonable, doesn't it?
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. You okay with that?
Councilman Holly, you got it? Floor's open.
Are you incorporating that 1,000?
Councilman Minin, there is a request to make an amendment to motion for item 5601A to be in excess of $1,000. Is that okay?
That's fine.
So the motion will read that we are voting to pass first reading of, this is part two, first reading of ordinance 0215-01, and to pass it with also with the inclusion of $1,000 in 5601A. Floor's still open for questions. Second reading of the next week, if it passes first reading, it will be a public hearing. Any more questions? Call her open.
Chris Evans?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Hollis?
Yes.
Ken Minin?
Yes.
Ken Minin?
Yes.
Andy Wright?
Yes.
No further business to come before the Board if there are no other announcements or questions? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second.